This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public and is not to be considered a public meeting. My mic is on, so you need to move it closer. Can you hear me? Okay. Please do a roll call for me. Ms. Anderson, present. Ms. Fine. Ms. Just Pogo.
Yes.
Oh. Okay, great. Mr. Carter? All right, we'll let Mr. Carter get up here. I've pleased and trained, can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance? Congratulations, you are the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, right now we're gonna move on to retirement recognition, Dr. Hawkins?
Thank you. So tonight, we're very excited that we have so many people joining us to celebrate different retirements across the district. And we wanted to just take a minute, Michael has prepared a short slide presentation for us. And we'll go through this highlighting each person, and when we get to each person, the principal or an administrator in that building will come up and just recognize them, and we have a small gift for each person. So, Michael? Laura couldn't be with us tonight. Laura will be retiring this year, and unfortunately, she couldn't be with us, but we just wanted to recognize her, and we will send her gift to her. Mark Walden, come on up. And tonight, Lisa Smith, our principal of North Elementary, will be recognizing Mark for the amazing things that he has done for Mount Healthy.
Mark, as you step into retirement, I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for your dedication, your patience, and your passion for teaching and leading. You have left a lasting impact on so many of us. You just didn't teach lessons, or lead schools, or support attendance. You have inspired minds, encouraged growth, and believed in all of us at Mount Healthy City Schools, even sometimes when we didn't believe in ourselves. This year, your classroom was more than a place to learn. It was a place to grow, laugh, and feel supported. The knowledge and values that you have instilled will continue to guide us long after you have left the classroom. Wanting to wish you a happy retirement, filled with relaxation and everything that you have been dreaming of. Enjoy.
Get a little chance for rebuttal? Thanks, Lisa. I just want to say thank you to Dr. Hawkins and the Board of Education for all your support and encouragement over the years. The 21 years here in Mount Healthy have gone very quickly. I know the past couple of years have been difficult, especially with the crisis that's been going on financially, but I want you to know that the comeback is bigger than the setback. And that I really believe everything will turn out all right in the end. If it's not all right, it just means we're not at the end. So, thank you so much for your steadfastness and your willingness to work through it all. I want to thank Lisa and the team at Katie's, with Katie Goulas at North and Lindsay, because they've made this year at North a very busy but fun year, and they've been supporting me totally all the way through. There's been every day they weren't in my classroom encouraging me, and it really meant a lot. So I really appreciate that. And also wanted to say, Dr. Hawkins, really the kindest thing you ever did for me was assigning me to teaching and learning a few years ago, because working with Janice Wolf and her team was just a real blessing. People don't remember you so much for what you do, I think they remember you for the way you make them feel, and Janice always made me feel supported, encouraged, and part of a team, and it really meant a lot. So thank you, everyone, and appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I will say that Mark is one of the people being recognized tonight, that several people wanted to stand up and talk about him and the impact that he's had on Mount Healthy. So, we appreciate you, Mark, and you will be very missed at Mount Healthy.
Hey Tina, it's Kelly. I just wanted to congratulate you on your well-deserved retirement. Thank you for all the work you did with MCW. Thank you for came for our kids while you were a librarian, and most of all, just thank you for being a great colleague. You are a blessing, and your presence will be missed in the building. I love you very much, and have a wonderful retirement.
Tina Butler, come on up. Mr. Jürgen, the principal at the middle school, will be recognizing Tina and her accomplishments.
Good evening, everyone. Today, we celebrate and honor the incredible career of Ms. Tina Butler, who has devoted 22 years to the Mount Healthy City School District. Tina began her journey at Greener Elementary, but her impact quickly grew at Frost Elementary. She served as the host coordinator, where she launched a reading program that brought mentors into the building to read the students. Because of her vision and dedication, reading scores rose, and the program was even awarded for being the most improved. Butler's deep love for books naturally led her into the library, where she continued inspiring young minds. She later moved into the high school, back when it was still on Adams Road, and there she connected with Margie Ferguson, and together they expanded a student club known as BCW, which later became MCW, and began organizing the now well-known black history shows across the district. The proceeds from these events were used to provide scholarships for graduating seniors, a lasting legacy of Tina's commitment to equality and opportunity. Tina's passion for literacy, her dedication to our students, and her belief in the power of community have left an unforgettable mark on Mount Healthy. She will truly be a difference maker, and while we will miss her dearly, we are so grateful for the time, talent, and heart she shared with us. Congratulations to Ms. Tina Butler, and enjoy this well-earned retirement. You will always be a part of the Mount Healthy family.
Tina, you want to say something?
Thank you. It has been a journey, and I definitely had the distinct pleasure of elevating and educating a lot of the students here, and giving away monies for scholarships for those seniors attending college in the fall. I only hope and pray that it continues, and that we continue to have successful students. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tina, I've got something for you.
Thank you.
I've had the honor of being at several of the shows that Tina has been involved in, and they are quality. So Tina, your impact has been felt, and you will be missed. Okay. Next?
Darlene, here we are. I'm so happy for you. I am so grateful to have gotten to spend the past few years working as closely with you as I have. I am so grateful for your willingness to go above and beyond for our students and for the staff. Anything that's ever asked of you, you've done without even questioning it. Your kindness and your smile will be missed, but Lord knows, you have earned this. I am so, so happy for you, my friend. Congratulations on your retirement.
Darlene, come on up. And Lisa Smith, our principal at North Elementary, will be speaking about Darlene.
Darlene, congratulations on your retirement. After many years of dedicated service, it's hard to imagine our school without your steady presence, hard work, and your very kind spirit. You've been an important part of what makes North feel like a community, and your contributions, big and small in our building, have not gone unnoticed. Thank you for your years of commitment, care, and quiet strength that you have brought to our building every day. You've truly left a legacy that will be remembered and appreciated by so many of our students and our staff. Wishing you joy, rest, and the happiness that retirement can bring. You've earned every bit of it. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that it was a privilege to work for Mount Healthy City Schools. I appreciate the years that I got to learn the students and the staff, and just the camaraderie that buildings had. And we've had great leaders, and I'm just so proud of the work that I've done, because I felt like I have helped a lot of students grow in their academics, and in their emotional and emotional and social growth, and so I just want to say thank you.
If you ever wanted to know anything about Mount Healthy, Lavanda Corner is the answer for you right now. She went to school at Mount Healthy, she married her wonderful husband Ty from Mount Healthy. She raised two wonderful daughters in Mount Healthy, and I'll tell you, the teachers at New Burlington always wanted the Corner Girls, because with the Corner Girls came Lavanda. She was PTA president there, room mother, anything that you wanted, she did. She worked in the treasurer's office, and worked with me for five years as my assistant. She always had such a wonderful demeanor. She was always happy and carefree. She knew every teacher, most of the parents. She did things like arrange for transportation for kids all over the place, tried to calm down parents before they got to me. She was absolutely wonderful. And Mount Healthy has always been so lucky to have her. As a teacher, she was the one that would explain the benefit department to all the staff that would come in. And what a wonderful welcome for them to meet her. She's always been just kind, smiling, confident, and wonderful. And Mount Healthy has been so, so, so lucky to have her, as was I. We will miss you, Lavanda.
Congratulations, Lavanda, on your retirement. It seems like just yesterday, we were working side by side in our classroom together. That was wonderful and fond memories that I have, and I remember when you decided to leave the classroom and go into the administrative assistance role, how much I missed you. But all things said and done, you've continued to do good work no matter where you were, or in what capacity you were used at here in Mount Healthy. Enjoy the fact that you've reached the retirement age. I hope good things happen to you, and you get to enjoy life a little bit differently.
Good evening, everyone. Today, I am immensely honored to speak for my mom at her retirement celebration. I'm sitting here not just as your child, but as someone who has watched in all of you as you've poured your heart into everything you've done, for your work, for others, and most of all, for our family. Mom, your retirement marks the end of an incredible era. It's hard to put into words just how much admiration I have for you. After years of hard work, early mornings, late nights, and unwavering commitment, you've finally reached your well-earned retirement, and I couldn't be more proud of you. You've worked so hard, often sacrificing your own rest and peace of mind, to make sure everything and everyone around you was taken care of. You showed me what it means to lead with love, to stay steady during the storms, and to give your all even when it wasn't easy. You've inspired so many people, not just in your career, but in how you've balanced it all with grace and love. You've made a real difference in the lives of others, and that is something to be incredibly proud of. I can't count the amount of times I met a new staff member or teacher at Mount Healthy, and once they figured out who my mom was, they'd say, "Oh my gosh, she's so incredible, she's so nice, you're so lucky. I would have never got through all that benefit stuff without her." And my response was always the same. "I know, she's pretty amazing. If I only turn out half as good as she is, I'm doing pretty well in life." So, and that still holds true. So, on behalf of all of us who love you deeply, congratulations, Mom. I am so proud of you, and more than anything, I am so grateful for you. I'm deeply saddened I could not be there tonight, and was honored when Michael reached out for me to make this video. I'm just so glad I could be a part of it in some small way. So, thank you, Michael. Lastly, congratulations, Mom. Here's to your retirement and many happy years ahead. I love you. Bye.
Lavanda Corner. So Lavanda was the first person that I met when I came to Mount Healthy. I came to interview, and Lavanda was waiting for me, and the thing that stood out to me -- excuse me, because she's crying. The thing that stood out to me the most about Lavanda in that short interaction was how kind she was. So, as we sat and talked, that just kept coming to my mind, is her kindness, and how she was trying to make me feel comfortable. And I thought, if I were to work at Mount Healthy, I'd feel honored to work with Lavanda because of that kindness. Lavanda, if you know her at all, is willing to do anything. She's willing to help you any way that she can, and that has really defined, I think, why she is so special. I don't know. I think that's why she is so special to so many people at Mount Healthy, because even though she may have sent people 50 reminders about their insurance, when they need to go to the doctor, suddenly they're calling Lavanda, and instead of her saying, "I sent you 50 reminders," she says, "How can I help you?" And that has defined everything that she has done. In my five years here, we've celebrated a lot of joys. We've both had new grandchildren added to our family. Lavanda has me outnumbered a little bit. She's at seven right now, and I'm at four, but I'm working on that, so, you know, maybe someday I will catch up with her. We've also supported each other in some loss, personally, and then loss with what the district has been going through as well. The thing that Lavanda -- she puts everyone first, as we have said. So my hope is that when she does retire, that Ty, Danielle, Kayla, for at least a day, will put you first, and just whatever she wants, you guys will do that for it. Now Ty does bring her tea every morning, which I have to say I'm a little jealous about, but even more so, meet all of the needs that Lavanda has in the retirement. You know, you've heard a lot of people over the years, Lavanda's been here 30 years, and in all districts, people come and go, but few will have the impact that Lavanda has had, and she will be missed. You'll be missed beyond measure. Thank you, Lavanda, for everything that you've done. Obviously, you cannot expect me to speak after this. I just want to say that it's been an amazing journey, and I've worked with a lot of amazing people. Started out at HOOP, and then moved to the treasurer's office, and then the superintendent's office, and it's been an incredible journey, and I truly appreciate everyone I've crossed paths with along the way. You're all amazing people, even people I worked with at HOOP, some are also getting to retire. So, it's just, like I said, been an amazing journey, and I appreciate everyone, and I'm just beyond words. So, thank you all very much. Lavanda wants to show you her gift. So, what goes unnoticed here is that Dr. Hawkins handmakes every one of these quilts for everyone who's retiring, and also for every new baby in the district. So, I just wanted to show some of her handiwork as well. Once again, she's trying to highlight somebody else instead of herself. Well, we love and appreciate you. So, let's all give a hand to Lavanda. Congratulations, Deb, on your retirement. You're one of the most compassionate and dedicated educators I've ever had the pleasure to work with. So, grab your sunglasses, get your straw hat, and head to the beach, girl, because you have earned it. Congratulations. Oh, another one. You can come on up.
As your educational journey comes to a retirement end, I just want to say congratulations. You have done great work over your time here in Mount Healthy. When you started, you were just a babe, and now look at you, all the experience, all the expertise that you've acquired while here. I just wish you the best as you move on to your next journey. I know that our paths will continue to cross, and it's just been a delight, being a part of your journey and working alongside you. Best of luck, and I can't wait to see what happens.
I am so honored to have the opportunity to celebrate Deb Hill's retirement from an impactful career in Mount Healthy City Schools. I had the opportunity to meet Deb in my very first year of teaching, and I truly cannot imagine a better person to have had by my side at the beginning of my teaching career. From the start, she made a lasting impact on me. She's kind, endlessly patient, and the kind of teacher who makes her students feel seen and supported every step of the way. Deb not only showed me how to be a better teacher, she modeled how to lead with her heart, how to care deeply, and how to lift others up. She's been an inspiration to me not just professionally, but personally, as a steady presence of warmth and wisdom. Deb, your impact has rippled far beyond your classroom. You've shaped not only students' lives, but the teachers lucky enough to learn beside you. I'm forever grateful our paths crossed, and I'm wishing you the joy and rest you so deeply deserve in this next chapter. Congratulations, Deb.
One more.
Hi, Deb. Jen Shelton. I've known you long enough to say with confidence that you are one of the best human beings on the face of the planet, and your love for others knows no end. Your passion for education has had such an incredible positive impact on so many students, and beyond that, you were the mentor that built into so many student teachers who are now doing incredible things in intervention. And that means that the work that you've been doing all these years continues with that many more students. So, way to go, and I hope that you are leaving with your heart completely full, and congratulations. Enjoy retirement. You absolutely deserve it.
I'd like to introduce Dr. Thomas, our principal at South Elementary, to highlight Deb.
Good evening. Today, we want to celebrate the incredible journey of Ms. Deb Hill. She's an educator whose story began right here in the district in 1992 at Jane Hoop Elementary. She was assigned as a student teacher that fall, and her path took an unexpected, but faithful turn, when a maternity leave opened up in special education, and she had a temporary certificate, but with a heart of passion, she stepped right in, and she never looked back. We were laughing during one of our lunch duties that she never had to interview for that position. Later she moved -- Later she moved on to South when the building opened, and she brought with her that same joy, warmth, and selfishness that have defined her entire career. Whether it's with her contagious smile, unwavering positivity, or tireless dedication to our students, especially those with autism, Ms. Hill has always led with her heart. She's a proud blood donor, she's a word-o competitor, and above all, a champion for community, compassion, and kindness. Ms. Hill sees the good in everyone, and in doing so, she brings out the best in everyone around her. Her legacy will live on in the lives that she has touched, the students she has lifted, and the colleagues that she has inspired. You may be retiring, but your light will keep shining in the halls and the hearts of South. Congratulations, and we thank you for all that you have done to support the Mount Healthy community during the last 33 years.
Hi. Like Dr. Thomas said, I've been here since my student teaching, and I just know that this is the place where I was meant to be. So many students I've worked with, and so many incredible people, a lot of you sitting in this room tonight, and I just appreciate this chapter of my life, and I am excited to move on and take all of the memories and lessons that I've learned into the next chapter. Thank you.
Congratulations, Julie. It is definitely a well-deserved achievement. I know that it's been over 20 years since we worked together in the basement at Greener Elementary, but I certainly have memories that I will cherish forever. I've really enjoyed working with you, and I know that you are a fantastic coworker for anyone else that you've worked with. I really hope that you have some fun times planned in your retirement, and I know that you deserve them. Congratulations.
Hey Julie, congratulations on your retirement. I wanted to --
I wanted to take a couple minutes and tell you thank you so much for all of the wonderful years that we spent together in the basement at Greener. One of my favorite memories would be when I was pregnant, I think with little Brandon, and my water table broke. And you gave Charmaine and Debbie Howard a heart attack when you called up on the PA system to tell them that my water broke, not specifying that it was the water table. So I don't think I've ever seen Deb Howard move so fast to come down to check on me. But we've had so many good times from our antics in kindergarten and going to weddings where tree fogs were abound and everywhere. And just you being amazing and a wonderful friend through all these years. I hope you have an amazing retirement and have lots of fun with your kiddos. And we need to get together soon. Happy retirement Julie.
Hey Julie, it's Evy. I just wanted to say congratulations on your retirement. It is well deserved. You've given those kiddos so much of your life and you deserve this time. I also wanted to say that I remember teaching kindergarten with you at North when we first opened and how cold our hallway was and how we called it the Arctic. And I also remember how much you helped me after my divorce and just shared how you got through it and it really helped me a lot. So congratulations on your retirement. You deserve it, enjoy it so much. Bye.
Julie Morgan, come on up. Ms. Godey will be highlighting Julie's work. And for those that you don't know, Julie this year was Mount Healthy's Teacher of the Year. So we also want to give her a round of applause for that. After 33 years of tireless dedication, unwavering compassion, and inspiring excellence, Julie is closing this chapter of her life and we are honored to send her off with deepest gratitude and admiration. Julie has been the heart and soul of our kindergarten program. 33 years in the kindergarten. For over three decades, she has been the first teacher of so many little learners, gently guiding them from the nervous first steps in the school world to being confident, curious explorers. But passion has always been more than just a room. It's been a sanctuary of safety, joy, creativity, and unconditional love. It really takes a special person to spend 33 years in kindergarten. And those 33 years, she's had the same passion, the same patience, and the same sparkle in her eyes each and every day. Julie just didn't teach the alphabet and numbers. She taught kindness, cooperation, resilience, and the magic of learning. Her students didn't just grow academically, they flourished emotionally thanks to her and her gentle guidance. And this year, we celebrated her as Teacher of the Year, a title that she's long deserved. It's not just her recognition of her teaching skills, but the impact that she's had on generations of students, colleagues, and families. She has mentored countless young teachers, offered that warm smile to every staff member, and reminded us all what it means to truly devoted children. Julie, as we say goodbye in the classroom, we know she will never truly leave us. She's coming back to Sub next year. Her legacy lives on in every child she's taught, in every colleague she's inspired, and in every culture of this school. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts. 33 years of extraordinary service. Thanks for shaping the lives with love and integrity. Thanks for showing us what it means to be a teacher.
I just want to say thank you. I'm not a big public speaker, so that's about it. Everything I learned, I learned in kindergarten. So see, there we go.
Can we give all of our retirees one more round of applause? Thank you again for your dedication to Mount Healthy City Schools. I'll turn it back over to Stephanie Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Hawkins. I also just want to thank each and every one of you for your dedication to our district. I've only met some of you in person, but just based on the words that your colleagues shared with us, I know what an impact you all have here and what a loss it is for the district for those of you who are moving on. But we want to wish you the best and just thank you so much for sharing your talents with us all these years. We appreciate you all. Okay, moving on to part D, discussion of the agenda. Do you have any questions or comments about the agenda? Do you do a roll call to accept the agenda? Yes.
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 All right. Excuse me, was there any discussion for the minutes? Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. Can we do a motion to accept the agenda? Is Mr. Kilgore and Ms. Bryant? Yes.
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 Thank you and I apologize. I'm filling in for Dr. Turner tonight, so I'm out of practice. You guys will have to forgive me. For the minutes for the board meeting on April 14, 2025, was there any discussion? Okay, can we have a motion to accept those minutes, please? Is Mr. Kilgore and Ms. Bryant? Could we do a roll call? Yes.
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 Okay, at this time, we are going to enter into an executive session, excuse me, executive session to consider the employment of a public employee or official and for preparing for conducting or viewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. We have a motion to enter into an executive session.
So moved.
Is Mr. Carter and Mr. Kilgore? Could we do a roll call? Yes.
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 Okay, we will be entering into an executive session at 6:39 PM. Board is returning to open session at 7:53 PM. Thank you all for waiting on us. All right, moving along. Item 3A, Mount Healthy Teachers Association. Are you out there? Do you have anything? All right, thank you. All right, item B, announcements. Do we have any announcements?
No.
All right, and we do not have any public input?
Did anybody fill out a card, Lavanda? Okay.
Okay, at this time, for the members of the audience who do not wish to stay for the business portion of the meeting, now is the appropriate time for you to leave. If you waited an hour just to hear me say that, now is the time to go. Moving on to 4A, the Great Oaks Report. I gave April's report at our April meeting, but our May Great Oaks meeting is actually this Wednesday. So I will do May at our June meeting. The Legislative Liaison Report, Mr. Carter?
Okay. So Legislative Report for May. There was an open enrollment policy change effective April 9, 2025. Ohio tax law mandates that all school districts must accept students whose parents are active military members stationed in the state regardless of existing open enrollment policies. So we may see increase in student enrollment, which could impact classroom capacity. Item 2, proposed state budget increases. House Bill 96 introduced in the Ohio House proposes increased funding for public schools in the upcoming biennium. Item number 3, teacher salary legislation. House Bill 191 proposes a new minimum teacher salary of $50,000 statewide. And then item 4, the parental rights law is now in effect, which House Bill 8 was signed into law in January, requires schools to notify parents of changes in their child's health care and of any instruction related to sexuality content. So that's my Legislative Report.
All right, moving on to item 5. I would like to first welcome back Mr. Chuck Soule to the board meetings. I know that he has not been feeling the best and he is making his way back to us right now and trying to feel better. We appreciate you being here and pushing through and coming back and being here with us tonight. And Ms. Sandra Griscom, excuse me. She has been kind enough to be here in Mr. Soule's place and to be making sure that we were taken care of and getting all of our financial duties done while he was out. So I'm going to turn that over to the two of you.
Jan Fersk, is this working? Yes. Okay, and hopefully it doesn't get super loud, but I'm going to go over to my laptop over here so that you can have some visuals while I talk. Okay, upon looking at the finances of this district. Please look through. Sure. Okay, hopefully that'll turn back on here. Okay. So I'm doing some analysis for this district. Just a little background about me. I was a treasurer for, I worked in school finance for 30 years, 15 years as a treasurer, and 10 years at one district. So I was a decade at one district. That was right when five-year forecasts were kind of new. And so for 10 years, I did my own forecast. I didn't use a company, but they weren't there then. Okay, so I would study the numbers and just say, okay, this is my number for my district and then project forward. Having said all of that, I know how to read forecasts and I know what the numbers mean. This is the five-year forecast that was submitted in November of 2022. November 2022. And I got this from ODE's website, all of them. So I made sure I had the right ones that were submitted. If you look at the very bottom, you see line 7.02 and I know it's a little bit small, but that is your ending cash balance on June 30. The first three years that you see on there are actual. It even says actual. They're not forecasted numbers. So when you finished 2020 on June 30, 2020, you had $23,825,000 in the bank. And you probably had more than that because the forecast is general fund only. There's no grants on here, no cafeteria fund, no athletic funds. It's just the general fund. So this district had $23,808,230,500, $20,238,000. Those are all actual numbers. When you look at a forecast, line 6.01 is the excess of revenues and expenditures, basically the difference. That's always line 6.01. Some people would say that should always be positive. I disagree. If you have enough money in your general fund, it would make sense that that might be negative. Because the idea of a school district, we're not in the investment business. You know, the idea isn't I'm the treasurer and guess what, my carryover is bigger than yours. My husband's a retired treasurer, so we could say that to each other. But the idea isn't to hoard money and say, oh, look, we have a big balance. The idea is to use the general fund money to educate the children of your district. So to eat into the carryover by 2/12, 7/5/9, you can see in 2020, about $1,005,000 in 2021 and over $2,000,000 in 2022. You still have a very healthy cash balance in your general fund. There's nothing wrong with this forecast. So this was what was presented in November 2022 and submitted to ODE. I'm going to go down a little bit, but you can see this is the May 2023 forecast submitted to ODE on 5/31/2023. Okay. You still had some healthy balances. You can see that we're in 2023, so we're one month away from closing 2023. We're supposed to end the year with over $10 million and 2024 looks healthy. Now, yes, we have a deficit in 2025. Okay, at that point, we did contact the state or they contacted, you get a letter, basically. I got one once. And you have to have a plan or some things that you're going to do, whether it's a levy, saving money, whatever it's going to be. This district did that and we got a letter back stating it was approved. I have a copy of that letter. So that was the May forecast in 2023. Okay, here is your November 2023 forecast. I'm going to go down a little bit. Okay, I've circled a number on this forecast because this was very surprising to me and this is one of the reasons that this board and this administration did not know some of the problems that they were in. Sure, in 2024, it doesn't look good, okay. But I circled the number, the 8,496 number, because that is what was reported as being your cash balance. Notice the word "actual" up there, okay? This is November of 2023. Fiscal year 2023 has been closed already. And we're saying that we had almost $8.5 million in the general fund at the end of 2023. So what I did was I ran a report. Yay, okay. So I, in State Software, and I was the three testers of the State Software for three and a half years as a retired treasurer writing the software. In State Software redesign, you can run a report of your cash summary for any reporting period that you want. So I ran one as of 06/30/2023 for just the general fund and I was shocked that our balance was $4.9 million. It was not that 8,400 number. So that got me very, very curious. And to me, your cash balance was actually misstated when this board saw the forecast. Now, in February of the next year, and I'll show that in a moment, they did submit a resubmission in February. The forecast has to be submitted in November and it has to be submitted in May. But you can do an update if there's a big change. I did that once in my whole career, I did an update. They did update it and they did correct it. So here's the forecast this board saw in February. Okay, they corrected that, but guess what? You just lost $3.5 million in cash in a moment, basically. And with regards to all of this, looking at all of the finances overall, it is my opinion that this district was really misled by whoever was treasurer. And I'm not pointing fingers at anybody because I know you've had quite a few of them come through. But the board and Valerie and her team really were misinformed of the finances. So I don't feel this district was financially irresponsible. They were misled. And you cannot rebound from that kind of a loss in a year. You probably can't do it even in two years. It's going to take some time. And even if you can, because this is what I had told when they, when I've heard people say, you know, you have to balance your budget, run it like a business, you know, keep your finances in line. In a personal business, you can choose your clients. You can say... In a personal business, you can choose your clients. You can say, I'm sorry, we can't afford to serve you. You don't choose your students, and you don't choose who lives in your district. You have to serve the students and the needs that they have. And I, in everything I've done, I've been the treasurer, it'll be five weeks tomorrow. So it's been short-lived, really. Five weeks tomorrow. My last day will be Friday, and then Chuck will take over, um, which I'm, I'm so glad. I have seen people work like crazy. I just see people working, working, working hard, doing two, three, four jobs because of the cuts that have been made. And I've told people above me, above, at the state level that. Um, and I will again. And, I mean, even seeing the retirees tonight and like, just the love the community has for one another and how hard everybody's working together, I'm, I'm amazed, and I think it's just, just really sad that you're in this situation, and even sadder if someone would say that they were irresponsible. You know, they were irresponsible financially. I don't, I don't believe that in looking at the finances. Are there any questions or any other comments anyone wants to make? That's really my statement. And I did put it in writing, and I called it cash misrepresentation. Um, and I can give a copy of that to Valerie or Chuck. That's it for this part.
Thank you so much for that. I do have a question. From the public standpoint, does the general community have some way to access the, this num- these numbers and this data?
Anyone in the community can go to ODE's website and pull up and just, you just search five-year forecasts. Click Mount Healthy. You can get any forecast you want and look at them, and if they know enough, which, no, put down to anybody, no, you may not know, to look at the cash balance and say, how could the actual cash balance change? From this projected, sure, change it all you want, but cash? You don't change cash. If you get a bank statement that says you have a thousand dollars at a certain date in your savings, and then the bank sends you a new one, oh, we're sorry, we changed it. That's an actual number, not a projected number. So yes, you can direct them to the five-year forecasts.
Okay. So, um, for the public's benefit, um, the public generally does not, um, connect how the board and the superintendent's office and the treasurer's office operate. So when the treasurer off- treasurer's office gives the, the board and the superintendent's office the numbers, like, do we have like background information on it, or do we just have to take it at face value?
I would say most boards take it at fo- face value because that's why you hired your treasurer, basically. You hired your treasurer to do that job. Now, a board member could ask for reports. They could meet with the treasurer and say, I wanna see some things. There's nothing wrong with that. Or you could, you as a board could direct the treasurer. We'd like to see at the next board meeting a bank statement or whatever. But you would never have the access to log in, you know, log into the bank or anything. That would be crazy, really. So most boards truly will trust, distrust the treasurer, because that's what, what they're in place for.
Based on your experience, have you seen a situation like this before where so much cash evaporated overnight?
I have never seen this in my life. And I talked to a treasurer, well, she's been retired too for years, um, today, actually. And I said, they actually, the miss- the cash was wrong, and she was in shock. She said, what? The cash was misstated? I said, they corrected it on a forecast months later, but they really misled their board and their administrative team.
Um, from a financial standpoint, um, I was also, did, did that happen once or was it twice?
It looked like just the once to me. I did not go past, like, go back to twenty-one or twenty. I doubt it very much, but I, I can't say. I mean, that's something we could go back and look, or Chuck could. But that was the only time that I saw that.
Okay. In terms of the impacts to our, um, our future forecast, what are the major things that are impacting our forecast going forward?
Well, it had a big impact because it's a ripple effect. You know, all of a sudden, you're saying your cash balance, because in the forecast, there's a bottom line figure from the actual, from one year, that becomes, goes into the next year. It's not at the very top, but it's in the middle somewhere. There's a place that says cash balance July one, and that comes from the year before. So when you change cash like that, you're changing every year's going down by that much as far as how much money you have. And that was three point five million dollars. That's a lot.
Okay. Well, uh, awesome work. Thank you. Um, thank you, and thank you for sharing.
Certainly. Do you want me to continue then with the monthly financial reports or?
Uh, yes, whichever one of you are, are planning to do it, either you or I don't need to.
Okay, so you were presented with a few things here. You were presented with a cash summary report that you get every month, just showing all the funds and how much was in each one. And then you were presented with, um, the cash reconciliations for payroll and budgetary, the two different checking accounts that we have. These are the same reports you got last month, um, I mean, the same format, the cash summary. I will say that in balancing the payroll and the general checking account, they are still off by the exact same amount they were last month, which is a good thing. That was something I really wanted to delve into, to be honest with you, and try to find, and did not have time, at least as of now. But, um, at least they are the same as they were, um, last month. That's the regular financial reports. The board also received, um, the Financial Recovery Plan Workbook that you were emailed, um, with all the attachments, and I also have a narrative that goes with that, um, that could be presented, I guess, to the commission would be next. I, I had some of it from a previous report. I tweaked some things and updated just to make it more current. Um, and at the very bottom, I have present day, and I go over the things, um, that I added into the workbook, the different reductions for fiscal year twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-six. Um, and if, if, you know, the board does have access to that whole workbook if you wanna see those reductions. Um, but that would be, would need to be approved tonight. Ms. Anderson? Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore? Okay, this is basically the approval of the tax rates for twenty twenty-six. Um, a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, um, the Hamilton County Auditor let me know that we had not approved them yet for twenty twenty-six, and that was something that needed to be done right away. So she said, please put it on your next board agenda. And there, it, there's, you know, they're just all your continuing levies you already had. There's nothing significant. Okay, Ms. Anderson? Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter? Mr. Kilgore? I'm going to go back to the laptop and pull up that forecast. It's dark over here. I can't. Okay, hold on one second. I'm going to. Okay, this is the May forecast. Um, I don't know how much everybody knows about the five-year forecast. Um, this was done by myself, but in conjunction with Forecast Five. Um, the company that we utilize, a lot of districts utilize to help with the forecast. Having only been with the district a few weeks, they really, really helped us work on that. They really helped a lot, because they know the trends. They have, it's a great software tool. If I had been with the district three months, I probably would have tweaked it a little more, asked more questions. I really did not have enough time. Um, however, as you talked about, a forecast can be updated at any time. So if, you know, if we find in a month or two it needs an update, it can be updated. Okay, so on this forecast, you have one year of actual. When it's submitted to the state, there will be three years. You always have.
Well, there's the frequency, the computers on the same frequency as the mic.
Um, so we are about to finish fiscal year twenty twenty-five. The notes that I only wanna tell you about, there's not a lot I really wanna highlight on here, but I do want to take note of, if you look at line three point oh one, the first one under expenditures, personal services, personnel services is salaries, one hundred objects, which are all your salaries. I just wanted to take note that we spent twenty-eight million five hundred in twenty twenty-four, and this year it's down to twenty-one million two twenty-seven. I just wanna take note of how much cuts, how many cuts and cost savings this district has already done. I also wanna say that fiscal year twenty twenty-five numbers, the current year, they are numbers that were certified by the Auditor of State's office. My first day was Tuesday, April eighth. Friday, April eleventh, and I don't work Thursdays because I have grandchildren on Thursdays. It was my third day, and, um, Anna Mary Thomas, who's absolutely wonderful, from the, um, State Auditor's Office presented a forecast on a meeting with me and some others at one o'clock. I did not know that was our forecast, that was the numbers I had to use for twenty twenty-five. I didn't know that till Monday. And that's nobody's fault. It's just because I was coming in at the last minute not knowing that. So those numbers, um, are her numbers, are the Auditor's Office numbers. Um, in looking them over, the only ones I would say is, um, there's a couple things. There's one revenue, um, line two point oh six, all other financing sources, the one point seven million. We've already gotten over one point eight million. So not a huge change, but they'll be, it'll be a little higher when we end the year. Um, I also think possibly benefits might be a little high. Um, and then in capital outlay, which is like equipment, you see two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, I can't point, um, but it's line three point oh five. That will be a little lower. It'll be maybe two hundred thousand or two hundred and four thousand. Not big, big differences, but it will be slightly different. Um, when you go down to line five point oh one, operating transfers out, that is your building. That's your ELC. That's the debt from the general fund. Maybe you're aware of that, though. We pay it out of the OO two fund, and then we pay back, um, the two, OO two fund out of the general fund. So going down to the bottom, we're at a deficit of four million eight ninety-three, four eighty-one. And that is, um, that is with, um, her numbers, basically, but I do think it's very, very close. And then that is with a two-year payback of our state loan. That is up there where you see five million three seventy-nine, twice in twenty-five and twenty-six. Intergovernmental and debt service, that's where we're paying back the state. They take it right from our foundation payment. Um, if a ten-year payback is approved at some point here, we will submit another forecast. Well, Chuck will, somebody will, and it will have the ten-year payback in it instead. And even if you get a refund back from the state and your foundation, we will show that as a reduction of expenditure. It's not revenue, and we will show that number as more like one million oh seventy-nine or something like that that's paid each year. I always told my board, the further you get out in the years in the forecast, the less accurate it will be. And I always said, they are living, breathing numbers. They will change, not the actual numbers, the projected numbers are. And the further you get out, the fur- you know, the more they might change. There's things we don't know. Um, this does have in the biennial budget up at the very top, where you see, uh, the unrestricted and restricted aid. Um, I do see, and I questioned twice why our restricted went down, and the answer was, as property values go up, the state share goes down collectively, and that because more people are eating into the pie of the DPIA, our portion will be less, those two things. So I kinda delved into that a little bit to see why that went down. Um, so, I mean, this is our reality. You can see it gets pretty bad as you go out, but, you know, you can't, you have to do what we can right now. Are there any questions about the forecast?
Well, just for clarity on the, the two-year payback versus the ten-year payback. So the two-year and versus ten-year, that's a decision that's made at the state level by the, by the?
Yes, and Valerie, do you wanna speak to that, how soon or how we would go about that?
So, right now. So right now, we have to go on the two-year payback because that's what has been approved, and so that's why our five-year forecast has to be with that. The commission could recommend that our payback for the advance be extended to ten years. If they did that, that would be a significant change in our forecast, and therefore we would redo the forecast and put one forward to be revised. But the board, myself, all of us, the treasurer, cannot make that decision. That decision lies solely with the commission and the state of Ohio.
Have we done forecast for the impact that that would have? Would that get us close to being positive?
We have. And that was, that was on one of the attachments. If you look under the five-year forecast, the second attachment, it says five-year forecast with a ten-year payback. That shows what the impact would be. So they, we would actually get some money back because we would have overpaid, and then going forward, the amount that we would pay back would be much less.
And I'm projecting that one, and I realize you guys can't like turn your heads that much, just so that you do have a copy. But that is in, again, that intergovernmental and debt service went down to one million oh seventy-five eight hundred. So you can see that going across. It's gonna be longer than this. You can see it for five years. It would be five more years, once, you know, we get to those years. But we did do both copies, but the two-year is what we have to submit by the end of this month, unless something changes by the end of this mon- you know. Yes, we are approving the forecast tonight to be submitted to ODE based on the two-year, because that's what we have to do right now. Ms. Anderson? Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter? Mr. Kilgore?
Um, on this one, we need to add a vote. This is the FRP, the Official Financial Recovery Plan. Sandra wrote a narrative for this. This is something that we have to do for the commission. The five-year forecast will be attached to it now that it has been approved, showing what our financial situation is. The narrative is an overview of how we came to this point with some key points that she included. So we do need to add a vote to this section. You approved the workbook portion in the monthly reports that we, as a district, have been doing. That we, as a district, have been doing for a while, just tracking the expenses or savings every month. This is the Financial Recovery Plan, more as a holistic document.
Do we need to do a vote to add a vote name?
Yeah, I just wrote down your names with lines myself, because I saw there wasn't, that, that happens to everybody. There, um, we need a vote for the, for the.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, okay.
We make a motion to amend the agenda to add a vote, item, what is it, five U, the Financial Recovery Plan approval. Uh, we do a motion to add.
Make a motion to add.
Okay, we do a vote to amend the agenda.
Mend agenda, okay. Ms. Anderson? Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter? Mr. Kilgore?
Okay, is there discussion about the Financial Recovery?
Right, this year approving that and the narrative, mhm.
I'm sorry, but.
Oh, yeah, for the, the Financial Recovery Plan, and what's the narrative that goes with it, that was, you should have had a copy of?
Yeah.
Okay.
So are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Anderson?
Yeah.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm sorry everybody. Moving on to, uh, item F. Hmm, the contracts? Okay, can we make a motion to approve those contracts? Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter? Is there any discussion about those contracts? Do you vote for?
Hold on just one minute, should the M O U be on the contracts? So, but did the, didn't the commission want all M O U's under contracts? Yeah. I think we need to, in the past, M O U's have been under contracts, so we need to make that. Amendment, or change that, and I want to just talk a little bit about the M O U. I do appreciate Julie Wakefield is here, our union president for certified staff. Recently, S T R S changed the number of years required to retire. And in our collective bargaining agreement, the C B A. Mount Healthy staff have a retirement incentive. If they let the district know by a specific date. Then they get a certain percentage of their final salary as a retirement incentive. If they choose to retire the first time that they are eligible. Whether that be the reduced amount or the unreduced amount, the first time they're eligible in each of those categories. S T R S made the change after the deadline, to let the district know about that. Because of that, an M O U was created and voted on by the membership, basically saying. They had a little bit longer, so if some people now are retiring this summer. Because the retirement parameters have changed. That gives them the opportunity to get that retirement incentive. Because of the original deadline, the years had not been changed. So that's kind of the overview of the M O U. And so currently, that M O U is what number is on the. Did you say P?
It's at page forty nine. Yeah. It's just an M O U. But it did. Say that it would. Under contracts previously?
No, that's not the finalized that we. I think the vote on that is, I don't know. I think we're going to do them both at the same time. So if you look at page forty two. This is about the retirement incentive. And it just goes through, um, I'm going to just read it really quickly. But we do have, we do have this one. So Julie, are you saying we should take this off until next month? Right. So I believe we, we could go ahead with this M O U. Oh, I see what you mean. So with this, the, what Julie's saying, as part of this M O U. The retirement incentive is also linked to the contract for next year, which has not been resolved at this point. I don't know if we could put pending? That, that part pending? Right, the, the cert, the certified have ratified their part, but the classified has not. And we don't have a copy of it for tonight, so the board could not vote on it tonight. They could vote on this with the twenty five, twenty six contract. Once. Shayna, how would you suggest that be worded, like once finalized? So on this, I'm just going to read through this. It says, whereas the board and the association are parties to a collective bargaining agreement, C B A. Effective July first, twenty twenty two, through, and that, that would have to be changed. Because right now it goes through twenty twenty five, which is this year. So we would, we would have to change that date for now. I don't know, what, maybe. So the issue right now is that the M O U is referencing a one-year rollover that was voted on by the teachers. And so we do not have a copy of that for the board to consider. But this M O U is linked to what the teachers agreed to do for a one-year rollover. And that's where the dilemma is at this point. Right now, the teachers have voted that they will accept no step increase and no raise for one year. And they did vote on that and agreed to that. The classified union has not voted on that yet, that will be coming up soon. So that's where the um discrepancy is because it says, like for the teachers, it says through June twenty twenty six. Because of that one-year rollover that is not. In the past. Mhm. Okay, if the.
Yeah.
Um, when is the certified, right? I'm sorry, classified, right? Okay, so just with the contracts as is, and then when we get to that, that will have to be removed at this time.
Okay. Wait. We have a motion and a second. Was there any discussion on just the contracts? Okay, I think we are ready for a vote. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Plus, I can achieve purchase orders over five thousand dollars if you agree with the voters. Do we have a motion to approve these purchases in the contract now? Very special, right? We do a vote. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Do we need to approve of the then and now certificates? That's in here. Do we have a motion to approve the then and now? Do we have a motion? Can we try and add a little more on, uh, a bit of a two mortgage, give me a mortgage. Alright, thank you so much for that, treasures. We appreciate what you've been doing. And we are sorry to see that you haven't heard that much yourself, but we are sorry to see you go as well. You guys are, are both, both wonderful treasures. We've been lucky, we've been lucky to have both of you working on all of this and so have you're working on this. Alright, Dr. Hawkins, before this you come in to me.
Thank you. I just want to start off by thanking Chef Potter, he's still with us tonight for all of the work on the reception. That was fantastic, and I just want to give him a quick round of applause. Thank you, chef. I think it makes it so nice for the families to gather and just be able to celebrate these different retirements. In our beautiful banquet center area with food prepared by our culinary program. So very much appreciate all of your hard work on that. We do have graduation coming up. It will be on May the twenty first, seven o'clock at City Gate Church, which is just down the road. So we will be celebrating the class of twenty twenty five, and we are looking forward to that celebration. Just a reminder, tickets are required this year. Students will have four, possibly five tickets. You had the opportunity to earn a ticket this year, or this quarter, for attendance, no referrals, things like that. So tickets will be checked at graduation. There will be a live stream here at the high school. And people can come to the auditorium to watch the graduation if they're not able to go and be there in person. So we are excited that that is coming up, that celebration for our seniors. I, section B, item B is some acceptance of donations. We did receive a donation from the Mount Healthy Eagles, number two one nine three. For the Mount Healthy High School volleyball team in the amount of five thousand dollars. Thank you. Item C is to approve the participation in the Unified Purchasing Cooperative. This is just a way for us to save money as a district because prices have been negotiable for us. Thank you. Item D is to approve the resignations, retirement, and terminations that are listed below. Thank you. The next item is E to approve a reinstatement. We did have one position that had been part of a reduction in force. Someone resigned, and so therefore that person is being recalled. Thank you. Item F is to approve the following certified personnel. And I do want to note, well, I guess first we need a motion, and then there's some things I want to point out. Thank you. On the chart where you do see the column that says cost included, is it a savings, a cost, is it neutral? I need us, we need to make some changes here. The first one, item number one, that would be a savings to the district instead of where it says neutral. The savings would be four thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. Item number two, that is a cost to the district. Of eight thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Item three is neutral. Item four is a cost to the district of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Item five is a savings of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. Item six is a savings of forty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars. One thing that I do want to point out, someone may say, why is there a cost? When staff resign, we may not be able to replace them with people at the same number of years or less years. And so, as a district, we have to find qualified people, and often we, you know, we typically will, you know, we have the latitude normally of going up to about ten years unless it is a special situation. And that sometimes costs us more. We, right now, are really struggling to get people to accept offers, and we have had several people just decline the offer because right now we are not as competitive in our starting pay as some of the other districts around us. So, that is something that we need to continue to watch and monitor. Right now, the overall savings for the district was forty-four thousand four sixty-one on this report, but that's primarily because some of the people were retiring as we move into the summer, where you don't have someone who is maybe at the top of the pay scale being replaced with someone much lower. This will come into play in a different way. And so, that is something that we do need to be aware of because it could cost the district a lot more than we're saving when people leave and we cannot replace them with people at their level or below. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G is to approve some personnel to work in our Twenty-First Century After-School Program, and those staff members are listed. This will be part of our summer program, and it is paid for with grant funds. Ms. Anderson? Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Item H is to approve administrative contracts. We have our administrators listed below for approval for the next school year. Um, I did wanna point out one thing. Number twelve on this list, you'll see that that administrator does have one year listed. That is because that position is funded with grant money, and so each year we have to wait and see if there is still grant money available in order to fund that position. I do want to note that our other administrators have a two-year contract listed. This is important. In the realm of administration, when you give an administrator a one-year contract, if you're paying out of the general fund, that is normally used when you are trying to part ways. So, you will give a one-year contract, and that person typically finds a job during that year. You can only do that one time. And on a resume, that really is a red flag if you're interviewing for a job, if you see that someone was given just a one-year contract. So, right now, the contracts are listed as two years, and I would recommend that they be two-year contracts because that is what is appropriate for our administrators. Ms. Anderson? Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Thank you. Item I is to approve social workers and psychologist contracts, and those contracts are listed below. Ms. Anderson? Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Whoops.
Mr. Carter? Thank you. Item J is to approve contract change and transfers, and those are listed below.
Uh, was there a discussion on that?
Yes, I did just want to note something um on this. You will notice that Shayna Berg is listed for contract change. This year, she has done a fantastic job taking over a lot of responsibility. Doctor Ogden left us last summer, and we did not hire her. When Ms. Berg was brought over to the Human Resources Department, she was going to have a lesser role, not the primary role. She was going to help with specified duties, but Doctor Ogden was over operations, human resources and operations. So, this year, Ms. Berg has continued to do what she was hired to do, and she has taken on everything that Doctor Ogden did in the past, which is an amazing amount of work. So, last year, she was not moved into that director position automatically. Reheld, and she has been fantastic this year, has just worked beyond what I think most people can imagine. And so, I would like for her contract to reflect that she is being put in the role of director because that is the job she is doing.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is to issue one-year limited contracts, and those are listed below. These are the teachers. A limited contract is a one-year contract, and so everyone that falls into that category is listed on this sheet. And I would like to stress, it is very important for us to affirm our teachers because we need to prepare for the next school year. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Thank you. Item L is to approve the two-year limited contracts that are listed below. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Item M is to approve a continuing contract listed below. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Thank you. I also do want to note that as we have gone through for the administrators, with the certified staff taking a um freeze for next year, our administrators also with their contracts, the two-year contracts, are at the same pay that they were this year. They did not receive an increase. Item N is approval to hire seasonal help. We often, you know, we need seasonal help in the summer for work being done in our buildings as well as mowing and things like that. We have not hired a person yet. We are just asking to hire the position with the rates listed below, and once approved, we will work to hire a person. Ms. Anderson? Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Item O is the recommendation to non-renewed paraprofessionals. Paraprofessionals are automatically non-renewed each year and then rehired. Ms. Anderson? Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Thank you. Item P is the um M O U that we discussed earlier that we are going to not act on tonight, instead have a special meeting.
Should we take a motion, do a motion to move on this kind of thing?
Yes. I think that would be appropriate. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Thank you. Item Q is the resolution to adopt special education model policies and procedures. And those are listed. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Thank you. Item R is the second reading of recommended bylaw and policy changes. And they're listed below. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Thank you. That's the end of my report, um with the exception of since we are due to do the M O U's, scheduling a special board meeting. Commission meets Thursday, a week from Thursday, so. Which would be next Thursday, so we need to be, and Wednesday is, Wednesday is graduation, Thursday is the commission meeting. I don't know what should be, I'll have to look this one. And it will be in our normal week.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hawkins.
Thank you.
Alright, is there any open discussion by the Board of Education? I can't believe we didn't get through this to therapy conference. By the skin of my teeth, guys, I'm very tired today. Um, okay. The date of the next board meeting, which is said would be um Monday, May eighth, since it's the end, our next regular meeting would be June ninth. Do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Alright, second? Kilgore? Paul Cleaver? Alright, we'll start at nine, please. Please, guys. I'm just very busy.